Coming up on UG TV. A special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas.
Thank you everyone for being here tonight. I'll ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session is being held on Thursday, February 2nd, 2017, at 5:00 PM in the 5th floor conference room for an innovation presentation. Immediately following the commission, we'll recess to the 9th floor conference room for an executive session regarding land acquisition. Roll call. Philbrook?
Here.
Bynum?
Here.
Walker? Townsend? McKeonan?
Here.
Mugia? Johnson?
Here.
Kane?
Here.
Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Holland? Here. All right, we're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Park to kick this off.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. Tonight, we're ready to come forward with the presentation about a few different activities, projects that our Chief Knowledge Officer has been working on since coming into the Unified Government. There are many different areas of innovation that really, that we're getting into and processes that we're going through. And thought it was about time to come forward and show you how some of these are advancing and different timelines on it. Now, one thing I do want to note is Allen House will go through and note many different things. We're really not set to dig into every project tonight, so this may kind of stimulate to go, hey, what's that? And we can hit some of those, but we're not here to dig into every project that we're working, working on throughout the course of various different areas. So the intent of this is kind of give you a, an overview of all the different areas and then kind of show some different timeframes and such that things are happening. And Allen has quite a built, built into this presentation, so we'll let him go through it from there. So at this point, I'd like to turn this over to Allen House and let him get into it.
Great. Well, thank you, Commissioners, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to present. Yesterday was actually my six-month anniversary of joining the UG, August 1st.
It only felt like it here.
It has been a whirlwind. And we thought it was appropriate to come back and give an update on the activities of the department. It is a new department for the Unified Government, a new structure, and there's a lot going on with it. And I think, you know, one of the things that I was fortunate, coming into the organization, is that there's a lot of great people, there's a lot of talent and good things that are happening already. So a lot of what we'll see tonight is a reflection, I think, of that work. And we're gonna continue to do that. I think it also reflects, you'll see, the aligned priorities of the Mayor, of the Commission, of the administration, and we're excited that a lot of these things are lining up in ways that I think will really move the organization forward. And I also wanted to say thanks to Joe Connor for his guidance and support through the first six months as well and helping me get, get a strong start, I hope.
You're welcome.
So, jump right in here. Just a quick overview, the responsibilities of the role. You know, we got the functional areas, management of Department of Technical Services, our GIS, our geospatial, our 3-on-1 contact center, and an innovation and open data group. Responsibility for cross-department initiatives and supporting those. And third is working on external engagement with local, regional, and national partners. And I just want to pause for a second to say that this is a pretty unique structure among local governments. In fact, it may be, may be truly unique in terms of putting technical capabilities with the responsibilities for working on cross-departmental activities and external engagement. And I think it creates the opportunity, not only to be a strong support organization, to really be a catalyst for, for change in the organization and to be a connector with internal and external partners. So I think we've got the potential for a powerful engine. The priorities, so we've got internal and external priorities. Internally, starting with operational improvement. We were fortunate, and we'll talk about this here in a minute, to shortly after coming onboard, to begin to merge our Public Safety IT organization with our DOTS organization. And I think that provides some benefits for us. And really focusing on IT modernization. Put that first because that really does have opportunities as we go through operational improvements to improve customer service, as we get better at moving data and information around. And then looking at innovation and open data and how do we, again, think about creatively about how do we solve some of these challenges. Our external, we've got regional public sector partners, and again, we'll talk about this a little bit more. Strong engagement with KC Mo, with our other local government partners, with the startup and civic tech community and national organizations as well. So it's been, it's been a good, a good relationship. You heard last week about the, you know, the new vision and wanted to just emphasize that the work that we're doing really impacts all the priority goals that have been laid out by the Commission. So you, I think you'll see throughout here that we really cut across a lot of these different priorities and really trying to help support departments in achieving, achieving these. So let's start with IT modernization. As I mentioned, one of the most exciting things in the first six months has been the incorporation of Public Safety IT with our DOTS organization and really creating a strong partnership where we're providing IT support services on day-to-day for the PD. We're sort of creating a broader community of practice among IT professionals in the organization. We're, we're supporting some of the projects like the rollout of the CAT RMS system and supporting project management. So as we get into some of the new projects, thinking about the build-out of the fiber network to support the body cameras, the body camera implementation itself, projects like a new e-ticketing software that the PD, we're working with them to implement as well. So around each of these, we've put a project management methodology to help to facilitate the smooth implementation of these projects.
Are you gonna say anything more about the CAT RMS later on in here?
Not exactly. And I think to Doug's point earlier, that if we want to take specific projects, we can come back and do a, you know, a broader.
That's fine. Would you mind telling the public what this, what CAT RMS is?
Sure, sorry, yeah. It's the computer-aided dispatch and records management system for the Police Department and Fire Department. And it's, it was rolled out, I believe, earlier this year. And so it, it's the electronic records essentially for our public safety organizations.
Thank you.
One last point on, on the Public Safety IT, and this really applies to all the IT as we're, we're going into this in sort of the spirit of partnership and of not doing technology for technology's sake, but making sure that it, that it works for the officers, that things that we're doing both make them safer and more effective of what they're doing. So sort of keep that operational lens on all the work that we're doing across IT. Got a number of IT planning efforts underway, so as we move to, to, I think, a proactive stance around information technology, I'll just touch on these quickly. We've got infrastructure, the, the network. We're working, starting on a fiber plan for the, for the UG and the broader community. There's a lot of opportunities, and we'll talk a little bit about this later, whether it's economic development or operations or, you know, supporting things like body cameras. Those all require a high degree of connectivity, and so we're looking at a more comprehensive plan to address those. We're looking at the next generation of the UG network, so the internal switches, that sort of stuff, and taking an inventory of our UG-wide IT assets and make sure we understand what we have and where we're going, what the replacement cycle is for all that, so we can get better at budgeting for, for projects and equipment. On the application side, we're beginning to look at a cloud strategy. So all of our software now is hosted on-premise here in our data center or different data centers around the UG. We're looking at what are the options that make sense for the departments, for the operations on a sort of a case-by-case basis as well as a more broader overall strategy. Looking, sort of related to that is IT governance and an IT governance structure that, again, sort of lays out the timeline for projects, when things are happening, and so that we can be as effective as we can, both with the, the operations, but also with sort of the taxpayer dollar, about lining up projects and investments that make the most sense at the right time. Things like introducing mobile payment and electronic signature capabilities that open up new opportunities for improved customer service. And then really focusing on operational work and support as well. We're starting down a path with Public Works to do an IT needs assessment that combines with their strategic planning process that's underway. It's really thinking about how can we support departments in their work. Another example is the Health Department medical records replacement. So in 2019, the Health Department, current software will no longer be supported, so we've got a, a long runway to begin to work with them on what that replacement looks like, what are the operational needs of the department, and to help them through that decision-making process.
Commissioner, can you speak directly into the microphone, please?
Sorry. I have a question about the, one of the Public Works area, which would be animal services. They're already online, aren't they, to, to receive money for, for dogs and cats and chickens and all that kind of stuff? Online registration and accepting money?
Yes.
Do you know, I mean, they are, they are, that's working, that program is?
Yes.
Okay, great. So there you go. Thank you for that answer. I just wanted to make sure it was working, because I knew we had started it up, I wasn't sure if it was working well. What, Joe?
Yeah, yeah. So we're, we have engaged with them as part of the PD and a broader set of stakeholders around the e-ticketing initiative to replace the ticketing system, so that animal control officers out in the field will be able to write citations directly, and it will connect into the records management system and ultimately into the payment if, if as needed or a warning. But we'd be able to better track the, the full set of activities, that sort of thing.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Would there be an opportunity to partner with Cerner on the Health Department medical records?
They're among the, you know, the big two, I guess you might say, in that, you know, in that space. So I think that's certainly a live possibility. Yep, something we've considered, yeah.
I, yeah, okay, so this is just rumor? I thought I'd heard that.
Microphone, please.
I thought, I was, I was trying to try somebody else's method, but it's not working. So I, I thought that I'd heard that Cerner was working with our new department, our new, yeah, the Wellness Center, and that they're working with them on, on that particular program.
Yeah, Cerner is the, you know, is the contractor.
Working in with K, with KU, in conjunction with KU.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Turn that around.
Any other questions for a moment? Touch briefly on IT security and management. This is, you know, obviously important that we have a secure network, we keep our data and information secure. This year, in the first quarter, we'll be initiating our first external network security scan, so getting a third party to actually look and, and test against our network, make sure that we are protecting our data as, as best we can. We talked about net upgrading the network speed and capacity, both for City Hall as well as for some of the other locations like, you know, Public Works. We'll be moving to Office, Microsoft Office 365. That will largely be a transparent move for, for users, but will create a lot of new capability. Will remove sort of the caps on email inbox sizes and that sort of thing. So there's a, yeah, so some of these things that are, that are invisible to users will improve the, the ability to conduct business. We will also be upgrading our IT ticket help software. This was first installed in February of last year. It's going through an upgrade, and you can see it's really given the ability to track in, in much finer grain detail, the number of service requests, the types of service requests. It allows us to note, see things like, you know, password resets are the, the major category. So now we know that we can go after and figure out, you know, is there something we can do to make that easier for users while maintaining our security? And we'll be expanding that use to the, to the PD as well as part of that integration. And the last point, we do have two enterprise agreements with Microsoft, one for the UG and one for the PD. They both come due in the middle of this year, so we're, we're starting down the process of, of figuring out how we're gonna best negotiate those to get the maximum value. We've got a number of major IT projects that are underway, so keyed to all of these, and that's why I put it as the first bullet, is that, you know, we have strong project management capabilities and we think about process redesign in the context of these software upgrades and that, that is really fundamentally where we get the benefit in the operations, isn't so much from the technology, it's from the technology combined with the process improvements and the, and the hard look at how we're doing business. So I'm not gonna go through all of these, but just to give you a sense, we've got our financial system, our NRC system is getting upgraded. We're, I'll talk more about 3-on-1 in a minute, in a minute, we talked about e-ticketing. So, so there's a number of these projects that are in motion, and so it's, it's ambitious, but I, I think collectively, the execution of these projects will be a significant step forward for the, for the UG. So a lot of, a lot of what those projects have in common, along with the infrastructure projects, another thing, is supporting information sharing. So how do we move data around the organization? We have multiple initiatives to do that. For example, Next Request, 3-on-1 GIS, all of those are about how do you take information and make it available when needed to support the, the operations, to support communications with residents. We are looking at creation of a neighborhood and project dashboard. So, you know, we're having a conversation earlier this afternoon with Commissioner McKeonan about, you know, public works projects as an example that comes up frequently where, you know, you're able to, to overlay the capital planning schedule and projects onto a, onto a map and make that publicly available, so the residents know what's coming, improve our, you know, capital planning. You know, all those pieces are sort of of a part, but they all require fundamentally the ability for these systems to talk to each other. So that's what we're designing into it. So this is the only technical slide I'll show you. Promise. But basically, you know, what, what we're moving from is this box up on the upper left, which is point-to-point connections of systems. So we're essentially stringing a bunch of sort of spaghetti lines between different systems. And where we're moving to is sort of a central integrated hub. It's called an enterprise service bus or service-oriented architecture is sort of the technical name of it, where you're plugging systems into, at one place, and then you route that data and information out to where it needs to go to support the other systems. It's a, it's a much simpler sort of approach for management and maintenance of systems. It allows you to, to upgrade systems without breaking everything else, which is a common problem. So there's a lot of benefits to this, and this is directionally where we're, where we're moving. And just put this in here, it's one of my favorite quotes from, from Jeff Bezos, and, you know, it really, you know, it's got the Amazon thing too, which is not bad.
Extra credit noted.
Extra credit for that one, right. But, you know, the idea, the slowest move is move is fast, and we, we take deliberate haste in moving forward with projects that we understand the full ramifications, the stakeholders that are involved, that we do our due diligence in planning. And if we do that and we move forward with these projects, then we'll actually end up where we want to be faster than if we had moved with, you know, without doing that. The, the example that I, that I like to use is I used to run paint crews in college and, you know, go out there and you spend 90% of your time scraping, sanding, you know, you're covered in paint chips, and the, the house looks worse than when you started. But if you just go ahead and put the paint on without doing that stuff, you're gonna be back a year later, you're gonna be spending the same amount of money or more to fix it. And that, you know, it's, it's true for painting, it's true for technology, it's true for lots of things. So that's the approach that we want to take with these projects. Talk next about customer service, and we'll talk about internal and external customers. You know, there's certainly an emphasis on customer service across the organization, and, and we want to be supportive however we can with departments in doing that. We'll start with 3-on-1. This is the front door for the organization, and this is where, you know, a lot of people come to get information about lots of different things. Wanted to give you a sense of the, the call volume and what those calls consist of. We had about 107,000 calls in 2016, and give you a sense of scale, and it sort of jumps off the page when you look at it, as municipal court is over 40% of those calls. District court accounts for another 10%. So, you know, over half the call volume is related to court-related activities.
Question.
Yeah.
When you say calls, do you mean telephone, or do you mean every way that those requests come in?
Telephone.
Okay.
Which is the, overall, the predominant channel today for service. So the other thing that this begins to tell us as we look into the data is, okay, why is, why are we having so many calls around municipal court? And, and what it's allowed us to do is kick off some work with Crystal Sprague and the municipal court around, okay, what's, what is this about? Are there things that we can do that make it easier for people to get the information they need, whether online or other places, that allows them, helps them, because we don't want them to get sort of caught up in, you know, missing court dates and that kind of stuff? So, so really talking about having some direct impacts on people's lives, and the data really helps us focus those efforts. Give you also a sense over time.
Mayor?
Yeah. Commissioner?
Commissioner, did you get an answer to your question as to why most people are calling? And who's, who is it that's calling?
I don't know if I can answer the second part of that in terms of who is calling. And in terms of why they're calling, it's, you know, when's their court date, you know, what's the status of their, you know, of their, I don't know what to say. Drawing a blank here, but, you know.
Their ticket that they have to pay?
Yeah, it could be their ticket. So there's a whole, whole range of things that they could call about. I don't have that sort of detail behind us, but I'll, one of the things that we're doing in our upgrade of 3-on-1 is, is creating additional forms, or not forms, but new forms that will capture additional detail that will actually help us to answer. Are they calling because they're calling about a, a ticket that they need to pay? Calling because they want another court date, and they're calling for, for all these various So give you a sense over time, 2013 to 2016. And, you know, we're starting to look at some of those longer-term trends. It's, you know, there's a downward trend in the call volume. Don't exactly know why that is, and we can go back and begin to ask, you know, was it, were there incidents, storms or other things that would spike traffic in particular months? You know, so we can look at that. We can also look at how are we doing on calls handled over a period of time? Are we getting better at handling more of the calls that are coming in? And so that's kind of the longer look at it. We're also starting to look at the call handle performance. In other words, how many calls came into the center, how many calls were answered, how many calls did not get answered? And, you know, we wanted to kind of give you the full, unvarnished picture. I mean, this is, this is our data, this is the information, and make that available to you. And we're at about 90%, I think, of the calls get answered. And so we're looking at, and starting into the process of looking at even by, by day of week and by hour of day, when are those calls, you know, would surge? When are we missing the most calls? And we're starting to see some patterns, not necessarily surprising, but you can see it in the data around, say, nine to 10 on a Monday. And actually, between two and three is another high, high-volume time, which is, you know, we didn't necessarily anticipate that. But you can look at it by day and by hour and, and begin to adjust our staffing and our capability, our surge capability accordingly.
Yes. So the calls that were abandoned, is that caller hung up, or is that rolled a voicemail, or is?
It's a, in this case, it's caller hung up, because we've got a queue, so they're sitting in a queue. That's a good.
Okay, so they, they'd gotten answered, and it said, please wait, and the next person will talk to you, and they gave up in the wait time.
Yep. And you'll see why on this next slide. So when we talk about sort of wait time, we're talking about both averages and we're talking about peaks. So we talk about the average caller waiting in a queue is 37 seconds. The average time before a caller disconnects is 2 minutes and 10 seconds. So we, we can really see that when those, when those call volumes surge and we're unable to, to answer those calls, you know, 2 minutes is kind of the cutoff time. People get tired of waiting, you know, I, I do the same thing, I'm calling, you know, another company. So again, that gives us an, an understanding of, okay, we need to make sure that we're, you know, we're trying to push down on all of these times, but we know kind of where the cutoff is, the threshold is for people, where we really start to lose them.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So is it possible, are the numbers inflated by people who hang up and call right back? Or is, are we able to sort that out from the data?
We're not.
Okay.
No, we're not. And then on the, on the right side, in the blue, see the average time that one of our customer service reps is on the phone, and then once they serve the call, you know, they're on for about a additional minute to enter the data into our CRM system. So again, just to give you a sense of volume and staffing and timing. So for our 3-on-1 contact center, you know, the, the resident survey certainly showed that that was one of those areas of opportunity. We've talked about the courts being 50% of the, of the calls and our work with municipal court. We'd like to start working in 2017, digging in with district court as well and understanding what we can do to, to help there. Most importantly, I'd say, is we're creating this closed-loop 3-on-1 system. So this is integrating our, our 3-on-1 software with our business software in Public Works and in, in the NRC and Code Enforcement, so that when a call comes in, it's not transferred over to another department, it's actually entered right there, and it generates a, you know, a work ticket that then is sort of directly transmitted to the department. And in that process, what it also creates is the opportunity to communicate back to, to residents. So you call in, it gets registered that you're, you've received, that we've received it, registers that it, you know, that it's being worked, and it registers when it's closed. So we can, we can control and, and support the communication back to residents. And that's whether it's through the, through a phone call, whether it's through the online channel. So it will give us a lot more ability to, I think, be responsive in communicating with residents. On the backside of that, we'll also be able to see, on the performance management and reporting, we, you know, we'll be able to see how, how tickets are closing, if things are aging out, if there's, you know, additional training we need to do with staff, because , because tickets are getting held up in different places. So again, it'll provide a lot more visibility across the entire sort of work stream.
And we, I've shared this with you before, but I think closing the loop on 3-on-1 will be the single, have the single biggest impact on citizens out of all the good stuff that you're doing. Those are the most common calls I get, is I've called three times, the problem's not solved, I don't know what's going on, can somebody just tell me? I think this will be absolutely great.
Yeah, we're excited about it. And, Mayor?
Well, the, the 3-on-1 app, are you gonna talk about that?
I am, yep.
Okay.
I can't wait.
So the last point there, and I want to emphasize this as well, is that the actions we're taking will, will enable 3-on-1 to be a more integral part of our emergency response. So you'll see in a minute, we're, we're looking at moving our CRM system up into the cloud. And what that allows is that if, in the event that this facility, you know, the City Hall becomes unavailable, or we need to bring in extra call takers from different places, it would be a system, a web-based system essentially that you can get into. So it will, you know, significantly increase our ability to be responsive in an emergency. And there's lots of examples of this around the country, Louisiana and Baton Rouge and the flooding, where you see these incredible spikes in 3-on-1 service when you have a, you know, an event like that. So, you know, we're putting ourselves in a position to be able to better respond to that for the community.
Yes, Commissioner.
You?
No, go ahead.
I, one of the things about 3-on-1 has been that if you call in and you voice your complaint, I've not seen data. I mean, I've seen, it's nice that we answer the phone call, and I'm sure that then it is forwarded to the right, right department. But let's just do something, I got a pothole in my street, it needs to be passed. 3-on-1, I can call and report this. But 3-on-1 has no indep, what do you want to call it? Independent power to. Independent power to verify that once it forwards it to the street department, that pothole is fixed. And the truth is, my experience has been, it can be weeks or months before it's even addressed. There has to be a conduit from 311 to a power in the administrator's office, or an ability to track whether that, that job is done. Are you getting to that?
No. Right on track.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't, if nobody is held accountable, 311, we've always had this interdepartmental problem where one department doesn't get any authority over another department's turf. And that's been for 40 years. You don't want anybody monkeying with what you're doing in your department, sort of a territoriality. So maybe they'll be held to account for 311 service calls that don't get done.
I think I'll let the powers that be address that.
Well, I mean, I believe that's what we're trying to accomplish within this closed-loop system that he's identified, and that's where we bring in 311, Public Works, and the Neighborhood Resource Center, which are the primary caller, are areas that get this. So when they get it at 311, it's creating a ticket and a tracking mechanism that's going out into the field areas, that they can see it, and it's, one, it's making sure there's service going on, supervisors are seeing what it is, and it's information that's coming back to 311 to show us, this is the area that, this is the timeframe they're working on, they do the ticket, and they take it through the steps. And if nothing is happening on it, then there's also flags built in this system that then come up and alert from a, either be the department head, or then it can come back and be in our office. And that's how I'm seeing this work. And Alan, tell me if that's how you're designing and that's working.
Yep.
So it is to accomplish really what you're talking about.
The end user is going to be the one to see it. And you know that most people who call City Hall aren't calling to ask for policy changes in how we do our business.
Right.
They got trash, they got street problems, the street lights out, you know, they called the police and nobody came. I mean, it is, it are not insurmountable kinds of solutions to these problems.
Okay. Done. I agree.
So having, thanks for bringing that up, Hal. So that just triggers me thinking about, okay, so each of us have our own districts. Is there any way for us to know if things are being taken care of in a, in an expeditious manner? You know, the individual commissioners, so if there's a problem around a certain area, it'll pop, I mean, we can take a look and see?
Yes. Short answer is yes.
Okay.
And talk about our GSS, our GIS capabilities here in a minute.
Okay.
And so almost, you know, the majority of these calls can be, can be mapped to a place and a location, and that's just a question of...
And the, yeah, and the reason I'm asking is because sometimes we'll have certain little areas, you'll get several people or several homes calling about something, you know, and if they don't call us, we don't know. But that's why I'm asking.
And not that we don't want to get your calls, but we'd like to get less of them, and this will provide an opportunity for us to do that by...
I love you on that.
I'll consider, I'll consider myself told that it won't stop me, you know, but thank you anyway.
They'll be able to see it, you'll be able to see it.
I don't want to have to call, I agree. I don't want to. But I have no complaints about people taking care of the issues. Thank you.
All right. So just in terms of schedule, and I know this is a priority for the commission in the administration, so sequence does kind of matter in this. So what we're doing first is we're looking at getting our CRM system up into the cloud, and then building the connections, integrations with Public Works and NRC. We don't want to do it in reverse order, so that we end up building and then breaking and rebuilding. And then, so we'll have that closed-loop system, we'll bring online a mobile application that will allow people to, to submit and get information via the, their phone. We're looking at, further in the year, telephony or phone integration for our call takers, and then, you know, moving into building out the reporting capabilities that we just talked about behind it, so you can begin to see, you know, what, what is and what hasn't been done, what has been done, sort of aging out of requests, that kind of stuff. And then really, you know, ultimately, the, the purpose of this is to help to optimize some of the operations and get that information back to departments, and help them, you know, see with greater visibility what's happening in their own operations. So it's, that's the, that's the plan. It's an aggressive timeline, so recognize that, that we're, and we're aiming to move quickly on this. It's, you know, and we've got a lot of the pieces in motion already. So moving on to our geospatial services, and they're really, this is our mapping group, and they're, they're providing a lot of support across a whole bunch of different initiatives. I don't want to spend too much time, but things like our fiber network build-out, our open data, those are all sort of resting and critical, resting on our GIS platform. There are a lot of SOAR activities that are, again, location-based, are, are being led and supported by our GSS team, including, for example, the tax sale, they've created a new tax sale map that's interactive, that you can go and see. So, so they're really doing a lot of really good work, and you'll, I think, hear from them later on this evening. Open data, so back in November, we launched our open data portal, working with our What Works Cities partner. This, we are sort of tracking the usage on this, we've gotten 700 users, give or take, a number of page views, where I think we're finding, consistent with other localities, that this is as much internal, it has as much value internally as it does externally. So other departments can access different data sets and think about how they can use them. We set up our open data committee that's going to meet on a quarterly basis through 2017, and we'll report back to the commission at the end of the year. So we're moving, we're moving quickly on that as well. Our GSS is leading a lot of our mobile application efforts. There, they have been piloting a blight early warning application, and this is really a first of the nation, where we would sort of take some of these indicators of blight and sort of through algorithms, essentially, try and figure out, what are those leading indicators? How do we know if a neighborhood is starting to move in a direction that we don't want, and we can get in there earlier to try and help to, to mitigate that and, and to, you know, help the neighborhoods? So that's an exciting one. Photo survey, this is again, sort of taking, allowing us to get better information about vacant properties and distressed properties, and I'll show you in a second here, I'll throw 311 mobile application.
Yeah. Commissioner.
I just, I just want to say thank you to everybody who's worked on the Your Data platform and data integration, because you know that I've always said, I want to have that on my phone, standing on a street corner, not tied to a desk here. And although I've had lots of questions and interesting observations about it, it is so incredible to have all of that data on very mobile-friendly maps that give me good data anywhere I am. I just, I love it, and I think you've done a great job with getting that off the ground.
Yep. The team, the team has done all the work, so they've, they've really been excellent on it. I just wanted to show you the 311 mobile application, it is in development, so it's not a, it's not a thought, it's a thing. So, you know, we're, you know, we're, we're moving forward with it, we're, we're not going to roll it out until we've got the other pieces in, in, in set, as I talked about, sequence kind of matters in this. So we don't want to roll this out and then have it go to sort of a dead end, where people are using it and the information isn't getting to where it needs to go in departments, and they have a bad first experience, so, but I just wanted you to know that that is, in fact, happening.
So what are the little red dots?
So those would be incident reports. So if somebody reported a pothole, you, that would show up on the map. Part of it is that you actually can also see what other people have reported, so if, you know, if you say, you know, this street light is out, you can look on there and say, oh, you know, three other people have reported it, and it's been received, and it's being worked. So, you know, you may or may not choose to report it, but at least you'll have that information.
So would graffiti be on this as well?
Yes, we can put graffiti, and it's fully configurable, so we can put, you know, we could put graffiti on there in the event, for example, of a snowstorm, we could put in there something, you know, that said, my street hasn't been plowed. So you can, you know, you can adjust it, it's fully configurable to, to make it sort of meet the needs that we have without, I should say, without costing a lot of money. That's one of the challenges of some software, you say, well, I want to make this change, and, you know, we'll send you the bill. This is a much more flexible system. Cross-department collaboration, this is the second area, and I'm going to move through this because it's, for interest of time here. We've got, you know, a lot of efforts underway, I've talked about a lot of them here this evening, supporting collaboration across departments. We really do see ourselves as, as helping departments with their needs, meeting their needs, where, you know, Commissioner Walker, to your point, we're, we're not trying to get in other people's, you know, business or lane, they know, they know their stuff and how to execute against it, we're just trying to be as helpful as we can in helping them be successful. We're working on technology planning with a number of different departments, again, sort of looking at what is the one, three, five-year timeline for existing systems, for replacements, for operationally what they're, what they're trying to do. In conjunction with that, we're, we're looking at setting up a number of sort of cross-departmental working groups. So, you know, SOAR is the, probably the best example of that, where it's really brought forward a number of different departments. There's a number of other opportunities to do that on a, on a much smaller, sort of more targeted scale for different things. We do have an open data committee, you know, things like drone technology, right? So as that merges, as an operational capability, as different needs, we can bring different departments together, they're thinking about it, work through it, you know, what do we do with the video, all that kind of stuff, you know, and we can solve for it together as opposed to solving for it individually as departments. And just wanted to touch also, you know, we are working with, with Wydeck and helping work jointly with them on things like fiber planning. So there's a, you know, a strong economic development component to having fiber connectivity, whether that's for small businesses, medium-sized businesses, large businesses, it's become, you know, essential part of, you know, of business operations now. So working with them on that, looking at it, you know, again, as part of the economic development of downtown, and we're piloting with them in a sort of, a joint engagement with this company called My Sidewalk, they're a startup out of Kansas City, to begin to pull different data sets together. They found it, Wydeck has found it to be very useful in being more responsive to, to inquiries about sort of different opportunities and land, lands, places where you got land, and mapping that up with demographic data, and all those sorts of things, they can be much more sort of responsive to those, to those needs. So we're excited about that. External engagement, talk about this, starting with our local and regional engagements. And, you know, there are a number of really strong, I'd say, local partners that are interested in, in working and being part of, you know, helping our community be successful. Start with the two KC Digital Drive and the Startup Foundation, you know, we've, you may have heard from some of them, we're getting them in front of the commission to update on their activities. They have a lot going on that actually is directly applicable to, to our community. Those, you know, both have extended invitations to, to join their board, to be more deeply integrated with those organizations and the efforts that they're doing. Working with the Digital Inclusion Coalition to look at, you know, how do we close the digital divide? How do we make progress in that area? Working closely with KC Mo, they've been really, really good partners in both helping orient me in the community, but also engaging us and pulling us into opportunities that they see as well.
Commissioner.
Mr. House, I sit on the board at Kansas City Area Transportation Authority, and they are, number one, working on regional transit. Number two, they've, they've recently also taken on a huge IT strategic planning process, for lack of a better term. But do you see value in maybe meeting with folks over there?
Yes.
To see...
Yeah, and that's, I should have put them on this list.
Okay.
They, you know, they have a new CIO that they brought over from, you know, KC Mo's Police Department, who's been very dynamic, and so they're putting together that plan. So we, yes, we are engaging with them.
Mayor.
Yes.
I have a similar request, because the Greater Kansas City Coalition to End Homelessness is now across the state lines, it's the whole area, Kansas City, Missouri, Jackson County, Wyandotte County. And they're putting together a new IT program that would be more inclusive to bring those entities in and together, and I'd like to have you have maybe a conversation with them so we can plug into that information and vice versa. And it's very complicated, believe me right now, and I know you know that, but I would like to have that conversation. Thank you.
We're working, starting to work with our academic partners as well, KU, we've talked, had conversations with K-State, have some active student projects with UMKC, that they're helping us do some research and other stuff in this semester, so that's, excited to get that underway. So, you know, again, there's a lot, a lot of resources that we can reach out to that bring a lot to, you know, to our efforts. Likewise, on national engagements, there's a, we have seven on this list here, there may be one or two I missed, that we're working with on a national basis. We talked about What Works Cities, and they were very, very helpful in 2016 in both the SOAR effort and the open data effort. Our Metro Lab, which is, is us and KC Mo, UMKC and KU, sort of an academic civic partnership on specific projects. Code for America, we're part of this new Chief Date Officer Network out of Harvard's Ash Center. So there's a lot, again, a lot of national resources and networks that are trying to solve for some of the same things that we're trying to solve for. So to the extent that we can, we can learn from them and we can leapfrog from where we are to where we want to be, this, you know, has the opportunity to create a lot of value for, for us, for our organization and for the community. The other piece here is, it's been a busy six months as well, in terms of reaching out throughout the community and had opportunities across a number of different media outlets to promote a positive story about what we're doing, and, you know, the opportunities that exist, you know, in, in KCK and Wyandotte County. So we're, you know, we'll continue to, to do that, you know, as, as opportunities present So that, at, what, 6:45, I think, we're... And I just, I guess I just want to close by kind of reiterating what I started with, which is that there's, there's, is a lot going on, and I think it's a reflection of the work of the people we have in our organization. They are, you know, sort of putting their shoulders to the wheel and making a lot of this stuff happen, so it's my, my privilege to be able to represent that to you all. And, you know, we're, we're excited about what 2017 has to offer, and I look forward to the opportunity to come back and give you updates as, as, as needed and as requested.
I look forward to those opportunities, too.
Yeah.
It's, it's great work.
Yes, it is.
I, I think this is what we had hoped for and envisioned when we authorized this position. We know we have great talented people all over our organization, working in all these areas, and to have this integrated approach, and to have someone who has the, the task and the time to tap into local, regional, national resources for best practices, and invite everybody to work together. It's a similar enthusiasm we saw with the SOAR initiative. A ton of great people have been very frustrated with a task that's bigger than any one department, getting to work together and seeing results. I think we see similar issues with IT. Our, our DOS department's great, our geospatial's great, we have such great folks. Having that integrated approach is really what we had hoped for, for this. So I commend Mr. Bach, I know this took a long, and Mr. Connor took a long time for this hiring process, but I think you've done a great job, and I think it does seem like, it seems, it's surprising it's only been six months. But it's, I think it also shows how ready each of our departments were.
That's right.
Really ready to go, just waiting for the opportunity to say, somebody say, "Go", and people are off and running. So thank you for leading that charge. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, sir. I'm a pretty simple man. I try not to be too complicated in my thoughts. You have put together this, all of these departments, and I'm sitting here and I'm just amazed that what has transpired in six months, I see the goals, and I'm just wondering, how in your mind do you define success? How do you, how, how do you define success? I'm just a simple bottom-line kind of guy.
Oh, that's a simple question.
But I just, I just want to understand, in other words, the, your methodology and how you're going through all of these various areas and going down through these different categories, how do you define success?
I think I'd start with people, so I think those, if we have committed, engaged employees who are sort of, who are interested in doing, you know, doing their best work, then I think that is probably the first criteria for success, because, you know, they can do a lot more than I can do, put it that way. And, and secondly, I would say, you know, we're, we're aiming high, and, you know, if we, we may or may not get there, but, but it won't be for lack of trying, and it won't be because we didn't set our sights high enough. So I would say, you know, if we can have a strong organization and we can move forward on our infrastructure, on our applications, the business, core business applications, and the data integration, you know, those three pieces really will, will enable us as an organization, and I mean, the UG as an organization, to, to, to do a lot, and whether that's communication with residents, whether that's thinking about how we manage our business operations, how we do our planning for assets, for capital, for budget, all those sorts of things, those are all really kind of of a piece. So that's a, a long answer to a simple question, but that's, that's sort of how I look at it.
I commend you for the work that you've done already. I think it's, it's been a pretty... I commend you for the work that you've done already, I think it's been pretty amazing, and so I thank you for what you've done already.
All right, that concludes this session. We will now accept a motion to go into executive session.
I move that the Commission go into executive session until 7:00 PM to discuss confidential matters regarding purchase price and property locations related to land acquisition, as permitted under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and that staff designated by the county administrator be present to participate in the discussion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, that we will come back, we'll go upstairs from this meeting for executive session, and then we will reconvene at 7 o'clock downstairs in the chamber for our regularly scheduled Commission meeting. We are adjourned. Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.